Everyone silence their phones, please. That's okay. Could we rise for the pledge police? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Little housekeeping. Oh, yeah, little housekeeping. I have to read my little thing. The board requests that all audience members be respectful to others by not whispering or having conversations during the meeting. This will allow everyone, including our minutaker, to hear what is being discussed by the board and other participants. Sound travels easily with the intrusive in this room and any background noise makes it difficult to hear. Okay, thank you. Um, we have minutes of our, um, what is like men's workshop meeting held on ten fifteen.
We'll make that motion.
All in favor? And then we have our minutes of our board of selectmen's public meeting held on October fifteenth.
We'll move it.
On favor? Then we have our minutes of our board of selectmen budget workshop meeting that was held on October twenty first.
I'll move it.
On favor? Hey, under new business, um, we have fire department in Ohio.
Yeah, um, this is Kyle Behan. We just wanted to introduce him to the board so you get a face to the name. Retired from the army, comes with a little real little experience and I think he's gonna fit in quite well.
Awesome. And he's already boots on the ground. He's all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The lone pile. We appreciate that.
Very proud of working.
You're welcome. Nice to meet you. Yes, how you heard your lesson? Yeah, okay. How I thought. Hi again.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Um, our next item was the New Hampshire DOT presentation. They have postponed until December third. Um, that's in regards to the Route one forty and Main Street intersection. They decided they needed to do some more, um.
Research.
Research. That's a good way of putting it. Okay. Um, now we have Lieutenant Evan Belanger, um, with an FBI National Academy presentation. Evan.
Give me a minute to get the PowerPoint. So he's got a presentation he would like to share.
By standing, that's okay.
Would you mind being at the table, Kelly?
I can do that, too.
I could hit you better.
You're the boss.
You're getting chances for now.
Take a little off.
Computer's slow, so. Give us some time here. Is this your first slide?
Uh, it was, uh, probably the other one, one before. That can work, though.
The one before was just good. It's all the seals, right?
Yeah. You wanna do the video first?
Oh, do you want to do the video first?
Yeah. Um, I'll get going while that's loading. This video is fifteen minutes long, so I trimmed it down to about a minute and a half for you guys. I did before we began, I just wanted to say thank you to a couple of people. Um, this, this was a multi-year process for me. Um, in our agency, this took about four years, um, for me to get accepted and into this. And for many people, there's no guarantee that they are going to get accepted. There was a couple of people in my academy that had waited upwards of, uh, fifteen years or more. Um, and certainly some people go, like I said, their whole career without getting in. So, um. Publicly, I just wanted to thank Chief Lewandowski. Um, four years ago, when I started to even apply to this, you have to be nominated by your, the chief executive of the agency. They're signing off that you meet the rigorous requirements to get in educationally and physical wise. Um, but then they're also signing that they understand the commitment that this is, because obviously it was a big commitment for our agency to, uh, to absorb. Um, so he, he signed that commitment not once, but twice. So I was very appreciative of, of his guidance and his early, um, pushing me in that direction. And then ultimately, uh, Chief Akastrom had to absorb that responsibility by, uh, spending the summer with one less pair of hands to help out. And it was a, it was a busy summer, so I was very appreciative for his, um, advocacy for this and then his ability to kind of. You know, I guess it's what he's, what I know him for is just to weather anything and, and carry on. So I was very appreciative of that. And then finally to you guys, um, I realized this was a big investment for the town and, and. That return on that investment isn't something you can always just pick up and, and realize right away. So I was very thankful for your just commitment to, um, higher learning for your employees. I think it makes Belmont a place where people want to be and spend their careers, but it also makes the people that live here, um, they get that next level service, which is what they deserve. So very thank. This is just a quick video, um, kind of shows you the backstory of what the National Academy was and, and why it was created.
No problems on the sounds. If it is too low, don't jump.
Public outcry led President Hoover to commission a study, recommending simple force training to standardize and professionalize law enforcement agencies nationwide. FBI Director J. Edgar Hoover responded with a proposal to instruct select law enforcement personnel from across the country in the most modern techniques in crime detection, preparation, and organization. The FBI Police Training School opened July twenty ninth, nineteen thirty five, and graduated its first class of twenty-three students in just twelve weeks. Over eight decades and more than fifty thousand graduates later, the FBI National Academy is recognized by as the benchmark for professional law enforcement leadership development. Today, participants are immersed in a robust ten-week session of classes, networking events, and fitness instruction. They emerge from a program professionally enhanced, personally enriched, and plugged into a global network of lifelong partners.
A little glitchy, uh, but it kinda gives you the backstory. So nineteen thirty-five, uh, hour session was the ninetieth anniversary of, of its inception. So the FBI did kind of a nice, a nice job of placing those little nuggets around the campus just to kind of remind us, you know, those who had come before us and, and just the, the privilege that it was to, to be in those halls, so to speak. New Hampshire only gets one selection four times a year. Um. So like I said earlier, there, there's just a lot of people that want to go to this that aren't ever selected. I, I think right now there's like a three or four hundred person backlog, um, to, to get in for just for New Hampshire.
Can't do full screen apparently, so I'll start here.
Okay, um, so the FBI National Academy, it's, it's actually the academy where they train new recruits as well. Um, the FBI was very clear with us that Hoover built this building for us and that kinda lets them know where they, they rank in the grand scheme of things. That's the actual campus, that tall building. Um, the second tallest building is, is the dorms where I stayed. Um, it's a huge, huge facility, um, and the actual academy itself is within the Marine Corps Base, uh, Quantico. And just to give you guys a, a size and scale of that, that base alone is about eighty-four square miles. So it's bigger than the town of Belmont. To get from a checkpoint, marine checkpoint at the, at the main gate to the FBI gate itself is like a ten to fifteen minute drive. Um, so it's, it's a huge, huge campus. Um. Uh, interesting fact, um, Silence of the Lambs was actually filmed partly here. So when she's in the FBI Academy, it's, it's filmed here. Um, and so there's a little Easter eggs all around the campus to kind of remind you where they, where they shot those scenes. We'll go to the next slide, please. Um, it's gonna be a little tough to read, so I'll just summarize. Um, I, I just can't underscore the prestigiousness of, of this enough. Um, you have to apply to it and that in itself has certain standards that you have to meet. The, obviously the chief has to sign off on that. You have to pass a PT test. Um, and then you get filed into a bunch, a stack of other applications. I have no idea why I got selected, how I got selected. Other than that, on the first day of the application season, I was working an evening shift and I submitted mine at twelve oh one. So maybe that's, that's why I got selected, who knows? Um, but then the FBI has to pick you. They have to invite you. They came up to Belmont from their, uh, FBI Boston headquarters. They did a background check on me. Um, I had to have a physical done at a doctor's office. They talked to colleagues. They talked to the chief. Um, it was, it was a pretty rigorous process. And this, this academy is reserved for lieutenants and higher. So lieutenants, captains, directors, sheriffs, chiefs, you, you name it. Um, and we had all of them in, in our class. Let's say the average like tenure there is kind of right around where I'm at, like that twenty-year mark. And they were like lieutenants and captains. There were only a handful of chiefs and directors there. Uh, like I said, the new agents are there. They do a pretty good job of keeping us separate. You, you can tell them when you're passing them in the hall because, you know, we're a little older, a little plumper and grayer. And these guys are twenty-five chiseled from stone and still wet behind the ears. So it was, it was obvious when you passed them. But, you know, one of the things that they kept reminding us is that only, or less than one percent of law enforcement ever gets accepted, uh, to this academy. And then the, the biggest thing I think is, is just the networking you're doing. Um, so every state is represented there and then we had twenty-two international, um, partners joining us from places like Tokyo, Berlin, Germany, Australia. So you're mixing and mingling with all these command level people from huge, huge agencies and some small agencies like Belmont. But, um, you have those people at your, at your fingertips on your phone. Just last week I was in my office and I get a call from the second-in-command at Hillsborough County, Florida. And he's, it's a four thousand person agency and he's looking for help with a case that somehow has something to do in, in New Hampshire. So I was able to point him in the right direction. And now obviously Belmont has much more to gain in this regards than, than, uh, than he certainly does by reaching out to New Hampshire, because that, that was a fluke, I'm sure. But, you know, the FBI nationally has thresholds for crimes, right? And so when we see frauds and scams at total thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, that's a huge sum of money for us and for people who would be reporting crimes to us, but for the FBI, it doesn't meet their threshold. So we can pick up a phone to a Hillsborough or a San Francisco or a Houston and say, "Hey, Tom, uh, you know, here's what I've got. Can you dedicate any resources to this?" It's, you're gonna have more, more luck doing that than just calling the dispatch center. So this networking is probably, in my thinking, the biggest portion of this. So the dates I went were June twenty-eighth to September fourth. It's a ten-week process. I, I drove myself down there. Um, it took twelve hours. I decided to go a little outside of the metro areas. I wanted to stop in Pennsylvania. Um, Vito died last year. And I wanted to kind of retrace our steps when me and Chief Lewandowski drove down there to select him, so I went a little out of my way, but. Um, other than that, uneventful. I get stuck in a fatal accident in Connecticut, which lasted a couple of hours and not, not the highlight of the trip, but. You have to select classes, uh, when you go down there. The classes are accredited by the University of Virginia. The University of Virginia is routinely one of the top public institutions in the country. And because it's accredited through them, these, I basically took college-level courses down there. And the FBI mandates that if you meet a certain educational level, you have to choose certain classes. So because I have a master's degree, I had to take all master's level courses. So. After, after successfully completing this course load, I was able to leave with a, a master's certificate, which is basically halfway to another master's. So if I wanted to go take another five classes and I don't, um, I could get another graduate.
You could do that locally. Well, there's probably no way.
Sure, yeah, but I mean, the, the course load itself, like it would be impossible to, to work and do that. You'd have to take my crap, so. Uh, those two people right there, that's, um, one of the commanders from Berlin Police Department in Germany and one from Munich. Just kind of two people I connected with. Um, so the, there's a lot of research papers, a lot of class presentations, a lot of, individual projects that you need to do. That was the bulk of the coursework and, um. You know, I'll say that presenting to a group of your peers is, is very daunting. I mean, just judging by the backs of their heads there, you've got London, England, um, Munich, Tokyo's in that class. The, I mean, that you can't fluff this stuff. They know by the book what you should do. And you have to own your mistakes with whatever you're presenting, or they're gonna be able to see right through that and you're gonna lose credibility. So I found early on, you know, I'm connecting with command level leaders from these agencies, picking their brain, asking them what their agencies do. But then it was very evident that, you know, there's a rhyme and reason to what the FBI does and what they've been doing for ninety years with this program, because at the end of it, I started having those members from NYPD, from these big agencies, "Hey, what would you do in this situation?" So it was just like, it, it came full circle. And all of a sudden, because of my experience with, with these people, my opinion held a greater weight to them. So I felt like that was kind of a, a neat part of this. And there's a couple, uh, other pictures in there, but we can, we can move on. So out of two hundred and sixty people were broken into five sections. This is, I was in A section. I chose it because they, they did PT in the morning. I wanted to get it out of the way. Um, so these were the people I spent, um, the bulk of my, my day with.
Is there, uh, pictures in pictures or in some of these slides?
Yeah, but that's all right.
Are you in there somewhere?
Yeah, I'm, uh, kind of to the left of the, the tree.
Which tree?
The one with the sign.
I didn't know.
That's our entire classroom up front. There's two hundred and sixty of us. We wear those, uh. They, they were very strict on the uniform during business hours. You had to be in that uniform. There was no deviating from that. Screen polos and those khaki pants. You know, while I was down there, I mean, you're in a, a pretty metro area. You're, you're thirty minutes south of DC. And I guess I just found myself, every day I was down there, appreciating more and more where I live, where I'm raising my kids and, and where I'm working, because it's, it's just such a rat race down there. I mean, to get off base and to go anywhere, if you haven't driven in Virginia traffic or DC traffic, it, there's no words that can describe it. I mean, there's seven-lane, eight-lane highways and it's bumper to bumper. There's not a car accident. There's not a police officer. It's, it's just like that. Um, so it was, it was a little overwhelming and I was, I was very happy to, to come home for sure. Um, the pictures aren't gonna work out that great, so I'll just kind of continue. Uh, each class, uh, picks a charity, um, to, to sponsor. We chose Tunnel to Towers. Um, that is a foundation that was, um, named for, uh, NYFD firefighter Stephen Siller. Basically, the story is during the nine eleven attacks, uh, he was called in, obviously, as were, as was the entire department. Got stuck in traffic when they closed down one of the tunnels and he grabbed sixty pounds of gear out of the back of his truck and ran to the towers, uh, ultimately losing his life. So this, his family started this foundation, uh, that's, um, advocates for veteran homelessness. They pay mortgages off for, uh, critically injured or first responders. And, uh, they provide additions to injured, um, service members who like need wheelchair ramps and stuff to the house. So it was, it was a pretty admirable, uh, foundation. Uh, we raised, um, close to forty thousand dollars as a class for that, that foundation. Um. While I was down there, we had a bunch of, uh, professional trips who went to New York City, uh, Philadelphia, DC many, many times. Um, each time the agencies that represent, uh, those cities, they kind of roll out the red carpet for you. I mean, we're two hundred and sixty people. Uh, we were on five tour buses and they, they shut the cities down for you. So we were able to see, um, New York City's Real Crime Time Center. Again, kind of seeing, not that we'll ever experience what they experienced, but kind of seeing how our job morphs into their job at, at that level. On a Sunday afternoon, New York City had about six thousand officers working on shift at one time. So it was, it was pretty impressive. That helicopter photo, that's DC Park Police. The pilot of that helicopter was a Merrimack Police Officer in New Hampshire. So again, with that networking, um, you know, this is obviously more pleasure than, than business, but, uh, the chief from Merrimack called down and said, "There's a New Hampshire guy coming down. Would you take him up over, over DC?" Yep, no problem. Have him stop by. So we get to fly restricted airspace over places that, uh, other people don't normally get to see. It was, it was, uh, quite the experience. Um, graduation, uh, that's one of the slides, probably one of the second class. Uh, that graduation was September fourth, um, and I successfully completed all the classes with a high A's. Um, you know, I, I'm just, I was so appreciative, appreciative, um, to represent Belmont down there, you know, in the early couple of weeks. Uh, it's almost like I didn't have a name. It was Belmont. Belmont, hey, New Hampshire, hey Belmont. Um. And that, that kind of stuck with me and it, it just filled me with a certain level of pride about, again, where I am, where I'm from, who I work for. And, and I, I carried that with me through the academy and it was just, it was a privilege to represent our, our town and, and our department. Um, this is the Yellow Brick Road. This is kind of the culmination of all the, the physical activity. It's a six-point-one, uh, mile run through the woods that the Marines, uh, use. Um, it was very physically demanding and at the end of it, you get this kind of cheesy yellow brick, uh, but it's, it's what. Uh, it's like the hallmark of the academy. So people who have gone to this, they'll all come home with this brick if, if they pass. But that, that's about it. I'm, I'm back. I'm, I'm recharged. I feel ready to, um, help, uh, Chief Akastrom lead our, our agency and look forward to helping him accomplish the goals that, that he set out using some of the tools and, and tricks that I, I learned down there. That's, the boys flew down with Sarah, so I was very excited to see them. Uh, do you guys have any questions or anything about the experience? Obviously, this is something, you know, not in the near future, but, um, I think something that's important to our agency and if we have somebody that's motivated enough that steps into a role eventually in that, in one of the command level roles. And we're lucky not to get selected again. This is something we'd like to keep going and, and advocate for.
It was a nice presentation and, uh, I never realized there was so much involvement there until you just went through it.
It's, you know, in the inner circle, like in law enforcement, everybody knows this and it's, it's tough to. When I got on the job almost twenty years ago, I, I knew about this almost before I became a police officer. And it's tough to relay kind of what it means to us, law. Kind of what it means to us, law enforcement, um to somebody who's never heard about it, so it's it's a big bridge to get for sure, so.
Thank you for your presentation anyways, because I really look forward to see what you actually did.
Yeah, and if you guys want to stop by the the PD, I can show you the thirty minute video, or I can I can go through some of the photos. I do have it, if you want to hold the break.
Share friendly, thank you.
Okay. Our next office, library staff resignation.
Uh, yes, I'm just updating the board that I did receive a letter of resignation from the library um director. I do not have any um news from the trustees as far as their next steps in um hope. Um, advertised for that, I can see, and if they do, I will let you know.
Um, we have other new business. Okay, CC must be uh conservation permission.
You want me just to speak to it, um Karen, or didn't Brian Broad give you any information?
No.
Okay.
Like to buy about one.
Okay, that's fine, so in your packets, um. We do have a town forest fund that was created when they did a timber cut on the town forest. And the Conservation Commission would um would like to use some of those funds to um. Replace the sign.
Replace the sign.
And I I gave you some picture uh of what the new sign would look like. Um, only the board or town meeting can authorize the use of those funds, um so it would need a vote from. This board to expense um seventeen hundred dollars to replace those um.
Seventeen hundred dollars for each sign?
Yeah, eight thousand.
So you're talking eighty five hundred dollars for.
No, there is eight thousand in the fund, there are the sign costs seventeen hundred.
Look at the fact of it though, you said, it says one sign seventeen hundred, they were buying five, it says.
I can speak to this.
I said only two for the, I don't know, like two for the town forest.
Um, yeah, I think they were only gonna get the one sign. So the one for the town forest is here, they originally had sent out a request because they wanted to paint, do all these signs. This is what the company sent back. They would do this one.
But their request is seventeen hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's why. A lot of babies, so that.
Replace each other's sign.
Not yet, we're just doing one of the town forests because it has, it was um. It has the most um dry rot to it, well, it is.
To clarify, it can, the town forest fund would finance the single side for the town forest. The other signs, if they choose to replace them, will be out of other funds, not not the town forest fund. You can't, of course.
And these town forest funds were due to the lumber or the timber.
The timber.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve seventeen hundred dollars for one sign for the town forest.
To be expensive from the town forest.
Fun.
Yeah, that's something, okay, I have a second. On favor?
Uh.
Bye.
Then in your packet, I just want to do an FYI that we are having a food drive. Uh, at Town Hall, we do have a box, um so people may donate. Um, food like canned vegetables, pea soup, pasta, cereal, um other items as well.
Non perishable?
Yeah, non perishable, like little paper, paper towels. That's it.
And where were those going once you've closed this?
There's a food. The flyer got cut off.
I don't have a flyer.
It's the very last page that you're gonna get.
Is that what I'm?
I I think the flyer also got cut off.
They they're trying to work with a couple different campaigns right now and figure that out. So, but their plan is.
Local Belmont people working with Allee and Joseph's and I think they're also working with um Pat, right? We'll have to get that.
The Baptist church as well.
Gonna be a lot of that and it sounds like there's gonna be a lot of need for that, I know that the um. Um, St. Joseph's Food pantry the last two, three weeks has. Increased immensely, people that are there, and those are only the ones that will are going there at the moment. And I just really worry about the elderly people that are really too proud to go. Um, that's the scary, it's gonna be so important for people to kind of pay attention if you have an elderly neighbor or something that um. Just check on them, because these people I experienced years and years ago. Having some apartments for um assisted living and having elderly and experience. They don't want to talk about it and they don't, they're too proud and people have got to be aware of that.
There's also, um, I had an article yesterday from the Hampshire Physical Policy Institute. And they estimate that about eight percent of Belmont residents are on SNAP program. And then about five hundred families are going to be affected by the issues going on with the budget right now.
Not our budget, but.
Clear, right.
Yeah, but there's a good example. That's five hundred people that are on SNAP, not everybody that needs it is on it. Right, I mean, that's, I do really worry about. Okay. Um, no other new business?
No.
Um, veterans credit information and state update.
So a couple of meetings ago, we had a member of the public um bring to your consideration. The town increasing the. The veterans' credit amounts from five hundred to whatever the. To a higher amount.
Or even.
Um, and so Colleen has gathered some information about what other towns. Um, currently give and she has presented you in your packets with that information and I will let her finish the rest of this, she did all the investigation work on it.
Um, so it's kind of hard to compare a little bit, um. As far as similar types of communities, just because everybody is so different and places are scattered all over, so. I kind of did two comparisons on the sheet that looks like this. Um, so the first comparison is for which credits are offered and the dollar amounts for. Towns that have a similar total assessed value as Belmont, like what is our tax base? Um, so these other places have similar tax bases to us and, you know, assessments as we do. And then the second set of values is. Um, places that are in our area, Tilton, Sanford, Franklin, Canterbury, Barnstead, Meredith, Waconia. Um, and what those places offer. And then I kind of did a summary at the bottom of, you know, how many of these communities offer more than what we currently offer and how many offer the same and how many offer less. Um. The next page of information, the flip side of this. Uh, shows what the average is for all of the communities in the state. So the second page is is for the whole entire state, not just our area or several more towns. Um, and it shows also, uh, I did the weighted mean, which. Takes not just the average dollar amount, because a lot of communities offer the same dollar amount. You take each community that offers two thousand and you multiply that by fifty communities or whatever and get. A different type of an average, basically, it's it's a better average, um, a more factual average based on what. How many communities are giving for amounts. Um, so my research, it appears. That for what we call the standard credit and the all credit, we offer five hundred dollars right now. The average, um, the standard credit is for the state is three hundred and seventy two dollars. The weighted mean is four hundred and seventy four dollars and we offer five hundred. Um, for the all veterans credits, the number is similar for the average is three hundred and seventy six. But the weighted mean is only three hundred and sixty eight dollars, because. There are a lot of communities that don't offer the all veterans credit. Um, that the town Belmont voters elected to to be able to give. Um, so basically, it means anybody that served and did at least ninety days of service and they were honorably discharged. They didn't have to serve during a wartime. The standard benefit that credits are for people that served during wartime and the all that credits are for everybody else that doesn't fall into that category. Um, and then for the disabled vet credits. We currently offer fourteen hundred dollars for our disabled vets. And up until this year, standard veterans who served during wartime were able to collect the five hundred dollar standard credit. Plus the fourteen hundred dollar, because you get a total of nineteen hundred dollars credit for the year. Unfortunately, the state legislature was trying to fix something and ended up. Uh, making it so that you can no longer combine those two credits together. Um, so as it stands right now, if we do nothing, um, those disabled vets next year will receive a five hundred dollar reduction. In their credit amount that they're getting. Um. But looking at the dollar amounts, the average across the state for a veteran's disability is nineteen hundred and forty two dollars. And the weighted mean is eighteen hundred and ninety four dollars. So if we were to. Make a motion or um put an item on the ballot to increase the disability credit to nineteen hundred dollars instead of fourteen hundred dollars. Then we would be more in line with what other towns are currently offering. But we don't know which of those towns were allowing the two credits to be stacked together. So these numbers may actually be, the averages could be five hundred dollars more. If other communities were allowing the stacking to happen. So I think overall, we're kind of on par with other communities for the most part. Um, you know, the only place that maybe a little bit funky is gonna be that disability. Because we wouldn't want our current veterans to get an increase in what they'll be receiving, so it would be important to have a warrant article. To increase that amount, right now, all veterans. The category of of veterans who did not serve during wartime. They haven't qualified for the stacking because of how the law was written. And that's part of what this new legislation was supposed to help correct and fix. So the change for the disability, if we made it be nineteen hundred dollars, we have one person. Who is an all veteran that is disabled, they would be bumped from fourteen hundred to nineteen hundred. So there are a huge number of all veterans that would be seeing an increase.
I mean.
You have to go through all of this for one person?
No, no, no.
No.
So that was my question. We have it still. We have it, you have it.
Um, okay, so we have. We have forty two. Disabled vets right now, two of those are all veterans that only get the fourteen hundred. But one of those has moved um and no longer owns the property, so next year. And you know, there's usually one or two that come in, we have a total of sixty one all veterans that received the five hundred dollar credit. And a total of three hundred and fifteen standard veterans that received the five hundred dollar credit. I don't think anybody needs to make a decision right now, um. You know, this would be, we can take it back, digest the information, see if you have any more questions or any other research that you want me to do. Um, other communities are starting to um create their warrant articles to.
So what happens now is, is that before you added, you added it together. Basically, and now you can't add it together.
Can't put together.
Down to.
Yeah.
And if we don't, if we don't add, if we can't, we're.
We don't increase the the regular disability amount.
Right.
And we're going to have forty two uh properties, veterans that are going to lose five hundred dollars off of their tax bill for. So this is kind of a two-fold thing, so one thing is that we need to. Propose, or I would recommend that we propose a warrant article so that everybody doesn't lose where where they're at and they can at least maintain. And then you also have the data here to review, to see what you feel about increasing any of these three credits. Based on the request of one of our um residents.
Yeah, increasing it from five hundred to a max of seven fifty.
Maximum of seven hundred and fifty for the standard credit and the all veterans credit. And then the maximum amount for the disability credit, um, we was just increased to five thousand dollars. Um, it used to be four thousand, they increased it to five thousand, knowing that you can't stack the two credits together anymore. That was part of what they were so fixed. Um, with the most recent legislation.
And so they just added more confusion.
Yeah, and you can increase it or decrease it to whatever you want. More veterans, more food for thought and nothing needs to be besides just today. It is good to know that we are not in the category of the majority of less than, that we are.
Kind of in the middle.
You know, in the middle of that.
Yeah, and we're around the average.
Yeah.
For I think almost everything except possibly the disability. But again, there's no records that show which communities allow that stacking. So it's possible that we are on the low end of things for the disability credit amount.
So basically, the standard, what pretty.
We're in a standing with the rest of.
Right.
Yeah.
It's the disability that is that we're in love.
I don't know, we don't, we can't really tell because I don't know which one allows those to act.
Yeah.
But my suspicion is that we're probably on the low end, um, but you know, it might be the type of thing where we wouldn't have that data until. Well, it would be two years from now, really, because this is the twenty twenty four data. We won't have the twenty twenty five data until next year, and then after any new warrant articles go through, we won't have the twenty twenty six data. Until twenty twenty seven, so it could be two years for us to. Really be able to accurately research what that disability amount is, you know, for other communities.
Any comments?
Good pondering or thought about it.
I guess I got a few questions. All right, thank you. Um. Okay, um, Hampshire granted sixteen seats. Rank Governor, is that Ryan?
Uh, that is, I know, um, Ryan did meet, uh, or did mention it quickly at one of the budget meetings, but wanted to make it official in a quarters of the meeting. That um our grant for the second truck did go through Governor and Council and has been officially blessed by the governor. So we are set to move forward with um purchasing that second truck with um. Hundred and ninety three thousand, seven hundred and six dollars being covered by the grants.
And then the rest will come out of, that will be the equipment line.
Um, yeah, well, right now it's intended to come out of a highway block grant fund and or capital, but probably highway block grant funds.
And we won't have it till.
Twenty six, yeah.
The the day that we passed Governor and Council officially ordered it, they've been on standby, ready to go, so.
Really?
Yeah, so the captain Johnson should be in Manchester in December. And.
Oh, really?
All the stuff, except for the body is already at HP. We may have it on the boat this winter, but it's probably gonna be February or March.
And then. Are you just finishing that?
I was just gonna say that you guys probably don't know this, but Brian's been asked by um. This company to do a presentation.
Oh, really?
So from the state, so. I think that's kind of a feather in his cap and we all recognize that.
Yes, he has been invited to go to the New Hampshire Municipal Association's Big Huge Conference, which is uh nineteen twenty. Where he will speak to his experience with the grants. and maybe we'll bring one truck to show and tell too.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
Awesome.
It's very nice that got that.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Hey, congratulations.
And I'm just feeling if he gets snowstorm and he has to come back. Don't either.
If we get snow, you're gonna get blamed for it.
But you're spreading for snow.
You've been slated this summer.
What day is it?
Thursday, Friday, I don't know yet the date you're doing it.
I think that's on Thursday, I think it's on Thursday is when I show up.
Yeah. Thanks. And then to kind of ranch off of that, I got some amazing news from Donnie yesterday and I don't want to steal his thunder, but I will let him come up and tell the good news.
Thanks to our friends at the DPW, we had no idea that this even existed. So, they said, hey, it's for replacing old diesel trucks. So, we filled out the paperwork and sent it in and we were approved to proceed to the next process, which is approval through you and then asking for the additional funds through the task. These aren't typically, they have done fire trucks, we have found out, but they aren't typically for fire trucks, they're more for other things. But this is such a great opportunity for us, because there aren't really grants for fire trucks. A lot of the grants that we get are for equipment, you know, gear, radios, stuff like that, so. Who can I give more?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is a, they cover eighty percent, up to eighty percent or five hundred thousand. So, essentially, we were receiving five hundred thousand dollars towards purchase of a new fire engine. And we reached out to a local vendor, we had to kind of go out to vendors to get prices of these things. And some of these things, they start anyways from eight hundred thousand to millions for the same truck. HME is a company out of, they're kind of local and they are actually getting into the spec truck game. So, they have some spec trucks that they'll be coming out with and their price with adding a little from us to equip the truck is eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. So, we would only be asking the town for three hundred and forty-seven thousand.
So, we'd put a, we'd put a warrant?
Yeah.
Yeah. Obviously, the warrant would, would clearly state that we're asking for those funds only if this grant is awarded.
Right.
For this particular truck.
And this company has been great to deal with, they even put it in their closet. If, if the town says no, we won't be penalized to give them money for holding on to a truck, so to speak. There are other trucks out there, I know the guys are, they're, they're excited for this and there are other vendors out there, but they're a little more expensive. We can look into them, but this one kind of like, the model of the truck is basically kind of like what we were hoping to look towards. So, it just, it's just Ford Chevy sort of thing.
Yeah.
And it's time sensitive, so essentially, like, if they approve this, we could have this new fire engine by June, July of next year. So, versus, when you custom make an engine, they're, they're two to three years out to receive it. So, again, you're back in that thing with the ambulance, you're paying for it the whole time that you're not, you're not even using it, so.
Where do we stand with the amount of money in the fire fund?
The ambulance?
Ambulance, I think there's about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
But they would not be able to use that money towards this.
No.
That, you've already established that that money's already earmarked for the next few years, correct?
I mean, a lot of it would just go away and be spent on payments.
So, we would have to, Steve would have to rerun the numbers to see what we're obligated to still spend, to see what's left that they could use towards this. And then I would suggest that if you did move forward with this, that you just finance it.
Government says yes to this, then it's still gonna go to the executive cost, correct?
Right.
So, the. I think we have to plan. So, potentially enough.
And I guess my question is, is when you're saying finance, but if the voters vote to approve the three hundred, then we're not financing it, because it's gonna be.
Well, you would either do, you know, raise three hundred and X or four hundred, however it ends up being by taxation, or you could just finance it and you're only gonna do, you know, the payment each, each year instead of piking up your taxes
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That next year in twenty-six.
Got it, right, so if the voters approve it, we wouldn't necessarily be adding the three hundred thousand to that first tax bill.
You didn't want to.
We would be, we would be doing a payment plan.
I would say do a, a loan, because then you're not increasing your taxes by three hundred and fifty thousand or more. By the time he gets everything speced out and done, you're just gonna, you know, do a three or five year loan and your payment would be very small.
I think you're gonna find that, right, because you're not gonna lease it, because you.
Correct, you're gonna buy, so you would need to do a loan. Steve can redo the numbers to see if there would be any access in the, the ambulance funds. And if not, I would suggest that you.
I get nervous about that fund, because, you know, we're gonna need a new ambulance.
Yes, we do.
We just got an ambulance.
We do, and I know that we're already going in front of the town to ask for monies for the CIP, for SCBA's. You know, so I know it's.
We're still out of that fund, we're still making a hundred and five thousand dollars payments for the ambulance yearly.
Right, but the one that we just got, the.
And the tanker.
And the tanker.
Which is another sixty thousand.
We talked about that.
It's not like.
Right, we talked about that, even to replace the old ambulance, we're probably gonna have to bond it, because, or do it through whatever means, because we're not gonna have the funds built up in that, it's gonna be close.
It was, yeah, it was starting when I ran kind of the catwalk.
Yeah.
The tanker truck.
Yeah.
It, it did get depleted, you know, I'm just going by memory.
Yes, yeah.
After making all the payments and, and figuring out the revenue that would come in, I mean, it was, yeah, it was kind of getting down to.
When is the, and, right, because tanker's not gonna be paid off till when?
I think it was five years.
And the ambulance that we have now, even though we paid on it.
I think that was twenty twenty-eight.
Was it?
We got, I think that's a hundred and five thousand a year.
And the, the engine three that we have here are existing nineteen ninety-seven model.
That's what you'd be.
That needs eight to ten thousand dollars just to keep it on the road right now, so.
Is this the one that you would be dismantling?
Yes, so, I mean, it's on reserve, reserve, you know.
We talked about, Donnie and I talked a little bit about this truck that they have to dismantle the engine, but they don't have to dismantle the.
The truck itself, so you can send it up with strap or sell it.
This government program was caught on it.
Right, right.
Because Volkswagen of America is the real sponsor of this thing. They got caught in an environmental fraud on Volkswagen rabbits with diesel engines. They were fined three billion dollars by the government and it was made, this came available about two, a year and a half ago, so. And it was, and the object is to take older trucks that are diesel powered off the road and like the dump, the truck that we replaced last year, which, again, Brian, thank you for getting it. The old truck was a nice one, an old truck, we hadn't destroyed it, got a hold of the motor, got the frame, because it can't ever be used again, and it's because of the emissions, and that's where this thing came from. My fear is if we don't react to this, and I'm not big on spending money, is the way the government's cutting food program, the government's trying to get their fingers on this money.
This, this was tricky too, because they, they, they have a minimum idling hours time and that truck didn't even reach it. So, I had to kind of go back and forth with them and explain to them as to why. And it was because of the foreseen funds that we had to put into it just to keep it going, so.
Well, and I think the other thing that we talked about was that you've gotta dismantle the engine, but you don't have to cut the frame on this.
Yeah, the, the last conversation I had with her, that's what she had said.
So, that you could take the engine, you could dismantle the engine, but somebody might come along.
Right.
And lock this truck and put a new one and then.
On every level.
Honey.
Yeah.
I have no question, I have no thoughts with this, I think this is awesome. And I think that we should do a. Thank you, thank you, warrant article in accordance. You know, I mean, it's, it's, if it doesn't pass, typical to town of Belmont, unfortunately, you give them money and then they tell us, no, we can't use it. But I think that this is huge, because, you know, you're talking three hundred thousand dollars versus a million.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you guys have any questions? Great job, Sean.
I do have, I just realized that you needed a motion, so I'm just writing it out. So, if you just have any more questions for him or. Uh.
Whatever.
Do you have any idea what the, besides scrapping the motor, what the cost of the sale might be?
It would probably be helpful.
Well, and then the nice thing is, here we go, here we go again. There's other things that the fire department needs for equipment. And if we were fortunate enough to be able to auction this off and get a decent amount, we could air them.
Yeah.
You can't auction the fire truck.
No, you gotta destroy it. That's what they think, oh, man, they were great trucks, here Andrew, they had to destroy it.
Right, but you can still sell them, right?
Yeah, they made, I think they're changing how they're, they're doing it, I'll get the details for you, but.
Well, let's, obviously, if we could get something for this truck.
I'm not, I'm not big on destroying it.
No.
But the bottom line is, keep in line with their.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
What, what did them do?
Yeah. We'll figure that out, that's for future discussion. Does anyone have any qualms about putting that on the ballot?
I think we need to figure out how we're gonna do it on the ballot, if we're gonna, if we're gonna bond it, if we're gonna ask them if they wanna raise the funds completely for it. I think bonding would probably be the smartest way or loan or whatever.
I'm not, yeah, it's probably gonna be loan, because I think the loan interest rate's gonna be better than the bond.
No, I didn't mean bond, I meant loan or pay for it outright in that year, it's all right. I think loaning is probably the smartest way, it's the lowest number we're gonna get.
I think loaning would be the way to go.
Asking just three hundred and fifty thousand on your skin speed.
Well, the other thing, the typical life of a fire truck.
They've shortened it, they, they went from twenty-five to twenty, they're seventeen now, given with the conditions of the roads and, and how the material.
Twenty years, twenty years, you know, we're not, we're gonna have it paid off.
All right, ready for the motion? So, I'll just read it out. All right, so the motion will be motion to grant the town of Belmont and the Assistant Fire Chief Don Pickowitz the authority to enter into the Granite State Clean Fleets twenty twenty-five grant program bound to and grant Chair Chairman Ruth Mooney and Assistant Fire Chief Don Pickowitz to execute any grant documents necessary.
Second.
On favor, in your position, very much.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Don.
Thank you too, Brian, for helping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, that's a new wording, John, I'd just see if you had key on it.
Awesome. Our next item. Our next item is, oh boy, is the town of Belmont versus Walker.
Uh, yeah, so keep fighting the fight with that, Mr. Walker's property over on Zippo Street. So, he has filed his second.
Do you want me to give a brief update for, please? October ninth, Mr. Walker filed a second motion to reopen the case. I mean, that the town was removing customer vehicles. Just yesterday, I signed an affidavit and we are filing an order for contempt.
Okay.
Kind of where we're at.
That's why we need that one. She, she's.
I couldn't hear you.
Uh, he has filed a motion to reopen, he filed at the beginning of October, so we're gonna wait, that's gonna work its way through the, through the court systems. But yesterday, I filed, or signed an affidavit to file an order for contempt, because he has physically blocked us from.
Yes.
Carrying out the court order, so we're filing an order for contempt to have him removed.
That's what I didn't hear.
Yeah. So, we have to wait for the, the courts to review this and grant to deny and the second that that happens, then we have the contempt order in place, so we don't have to keep waiting and waiting and waiting. So, we have to set that one in our legal warrant.
All right, thank you, Karen.
And that could be another thirty to sixty days.
Probably more.
Um, more, and so we make any more action on that.
Awesome. Um, do we have any other old business?
I do.
I do, I have a question, let me guarantee. I've got this friend of mine, he's kind of an aged guy, kind of a pain in my butt, but he keeps bugging me about this mess we've got ruined down on one forty. Said if you're coming from Tilford.
Yeah, we're working on that, but I am very familiar with the property, his permit has since expired, so we are working to send him a notice.
They have some logging laws, they always have been, but, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just terrible.
It's a mess, it's an absolute mess.
Welcome to Belmont.
I thought you'd been complaining about the rooster.
That's the only good thing.
So, you're on top of that, so, and I figured since, you know, fuck, the signs are disappearing, posts and all, that we could take the, we could take the town line sign and bring it and put it in the ground, just a suggestion, okay, don't. Okay, um, any.
There's some laws against that.
Yeah, we know, wow. Really.
It's a preparation, so, you know.
There you go. Uh, it'll take them some time to figure out exactly if we did that, where the real town line is, so it might be to our advantage, um, any public comments, yes, right?
One, one more thing, just to give you guys an update, I'm in a room, we're almost, we're almost done.
Except for.
We've got a little, little battle to do and rumor is, yesterday, we're kind of right on budget, so maybe, maybe a little below budget is what I'm hoping, but.
Nice.
You know, it's worked, it's worked out really well, our contractors, town contractors did a great job, great communication. Yeah, we're happy, so we keep the stop signs of the new focus, but we're good, so.
I live off of it and it's exceptionally better, it's awesome.
Well, and, and kudos to Gilmington too, because of the line, I mean, there was, there's probably a a hundred and fifty foot section that was in Gilmington that really needed to be addressed as far as, you know, the ledge on the side of the road, opening up the road, opening up the sight distance and the vision and, and Gilmington kind of, they, they approved to have them fix that while they were there.
So, nice.
We didn't, you know, we didn't absorb that cost and we kind of got them to go home with us, which is excellent. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's better for good, so.
Great, all right, anything else? Um, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November eighteenth at six o'clock. And do we have, we have no non-public? Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Say it.
Very.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.